I find that if I print them out, there are a million copies here. If I print them out, there are no copies.
Looking for the minutes, Nick? Are you in the agenda?
I have an agenda.
Okay.
Sorry, I feel good about that. So we should probably start the meeting. Roll call. Do you know everybody that's here?
I do.
That's good.
Thank you.
That was Trandall, Brian.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, isn't that awful? Randy said he had just gotten that bike and he wasn't used to it.
Well, he should have taken a bicycle training course.
But Randy says we're opinion and the time is up. The time is up. That's what he wants.
Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Everyone votes this evening. And have we had a chance to look at the minutes of the last meeting? Any further adjustments?
I read some of them, but I don't remember having any issues with them.
Sarah, would you like to edit them any further?
No.
Neither would I.
So I make a motion that we approve those minutes?
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There it is. I don't think there'll be any public comment in that there's... Hank's here with us, and it's good to see him, but other than that, there's not much of a public turnout, so...
Oh, it's gonna be exciting.
Yeah, we're gonna have a good time. So, let's see, I thought that we were gonna start looking at the questions for the questionnaire that will go out to the public as part of the master plan. Now, has anybody come up with any further questions that they don't see on the previous questionnaire?
Or are there things on the previous questionnaire that don't need to be looked at?
And exactly, that's...
One of the things I'd like to do is circulate copies of surveys done by three towns. Monroe in 2010, Allentown, and Lear. Those are the only ones I found on the web. So if I send them around, you can just take a look at the kinds of formats and questions or whatever, some other things.
I think the format for the last questionnaire was put together by Phil Davies, and as I understand it, he has had professional experience with surveys and so on.
He came in for the tallying. He wasn't involved in developing the survey format, and that was us stabbing in the dark.
Okay, all right, I knew he was involved.
Yeah. His survey form came back with a little blue sticky on it saying, "Would you like help in tabulating?" Oh, dear.
Okay.
Phil will be helpful. He does not want to be on a committee. He doesn't want to come, but when it gets to crunch time, he'll be happy to step in and help us crunch.
Yeah, I remember, I think he said that last time, some of our questions were maybe leading questions or something like that, and he could help us make them unbiased. So if we come up with some general ideas and so on, he can help. Word them better.
Well, I guess it's... Part of it is the format from the last one, it just is ranking. In other words, you know, giving... Scoring each one of the items all the way through. And then others are kind of like multiple choice.
So does the original form look good? I mean, I thought the color coding was a good thing because that helped to sort out who was who, resident or non-resident.
I agree, that was great.
Makes it happen really quickly.
You could take the library off and just stick the...
Yeah.
I think that could be, right?
That be appropriate?
Just keep the one. Fire protection also pretty... First statement, that's fine. First question, please. Who's cycling or do you have?
Another thing, the community center was a big part of that last one, and we don't need to worry about that so much. We've pretty well got it on that.
Let's see.
Want to just...
Sure.
Is it a positive?
Sure.
There is one thing here in the Allentown's survey where they have, instead of making a statement, "Do you agree with the statement," or "Disagree," well, I guess it's... It is kind of like what we have on our number seven. What they have is, instead of more adequate now or less, they say encourage, stay as is, or discourage, which I guess we're just using different words for the same thing. Different types of development.
Betsy, do you have any wording for... Are you interested in the rural residential being extended up Route 16? Do you have any wording for that?
Still in the last survey.
We did ask that same question in the last survey. Let's see.
Didn't we just vote on that at town meeting?
We did.
Didn't we?
I don't think so.
Which, yes, we did on Route 16. We just voted on it.
Yeah, there was... It was on the ballot, or was it Warren or...?
It was Warren.
Was that a couple of years ago? It wasn't the last one?
This year.
This year. It wasn't much, we did.
Yeah.
I think it's on... Or polling, though. I think it's, you know, it's on...
They voted to keep it the way it is, however many times.
Oh, I remember, but I think people felt the wording was very confusing. I know Sam didn't understand it, he didn't vote on it.
Who?
Sam, the guy I'm connected to.
Couldn't you straighten him out?
I'd forgotten it was gonna be on there, I guess, and then when he got out of there, he said, "What was the meaning of that question that I didn't understand it?" He said...
I could vote close. I don't remember.
Well, if I owned a place with a 50-year-old, he wanted to develop the property, I'd be a real pissed.
Well, it seems that, as I understood it, there was a survey of everyone that lived up there, were going to be affected by it, and they were all in favor.
Yeah, last time, 63% of the respondents, the year-round respondents, and 64% of the seasonal respondents felt that Route 16 should be zoned village only near the village, and then made rural residential north. And I could see that maybe rural residential wouldn't be what the town might want to go with, but maybe they'd want to go with rural commercial or something like that, so it would be a third district that might have some elements from the village wording.
Yeah, I thought Karen said it nicely, Conley, when she, you know, said that people aren't being represented, who bought that property and thought that they'd buy it in one way, and now they're converting to something else without their input, you know?
That's right.
But I thought that was well said.
So she was saying that it shouldn't be converted from village?
Right, because then everybody had time to put their input in those suits. It was, you know, it was a...
Yeah, I think it should... If it's gonna happen, it should be part of the master plan probably first. I mean, everybody's subject to that. You buy up on Tyrell, and you think that you can build a four-bedroom house or whatever, and then regulations come in later that say that septic's not gonna allow that, so suddenly you don't have what you thought you bought.
Right.
That happens all over, everywhere, to some extent. You know, people bought land at the Wildcat River, and they had expectation that they could do something right up to the river, but then the River Conservation District came in, and they can't do something within 75 feet of the river. Okay, so that's...
Well, that's part of that state law, too.
No, actually, this is part of our River Conservation District...
Yeah, but it didn't assure them.
Yeah, but it doesn't apply to Class 4 rivers, which I think is what the Wildcat is, and I don't remember if the Ellis, where it is in our area, if that's a Class 4 or 3.
Well, where would that be, because you've got the Holy River out here.
The what?
The Holy River.
What's the Holy River?
Right across the street, the Holy River. It's the Wildcat, wild and scenic, preserved by state and federal.
Sure. And because we've got a River Conservation District along that, you now can't have construction within 75 feet of it. And that's new, for example, I think that came into effect maybe in '87 or '88, and, you know, we had land starting in '74 along the river. Not that we were actually gonna build there, but it did change what we could have done.
Yeah.
So you've got to expect that. If you buy land, it's not written in stone that you can, you know, set up an oil well on it or something. There are gonna be restrictions as to what you can do.
That's wrong.
And the restrictions can change.
Well, I can't find the vote on that, but then...
Probably if it was, Jeanette would have... Think, Jeanette would have...
Am I in the wrong year?
What, this year?
We...
I'm in the wrong year.
Well, we don't have the minutes from this last meeting, because that would be a next year's town.
But the ballot should be in there.
Oh, what? Yes, the wording of the ballot, but not the results.
Right.
Well, we could...
Well, I know that it was... The idea of turning it to rural residential was voted down.
Right.
But what the wording of that article was, I don't know.
What is that?
As rural residential? As supposed to rural commercial?
Say it's commercial, took it down.
Oh, what there?
It was Article 4 on the ballot.
Okay.
So if they saw...
But this is printed before the vote, so...
Before. See if the town will vote to amend the Jackson zoning ordinance as proposed by citizens' petition to amend the Jackson zoning map, to change the zoning district within 500 feet on either side of the traveled center lane of Public Route 16, north of Eagle Mountain Road, from So other than, there's a lot of words in there, I didn't think it was...
Which one were there?
Thought the intent was there.
Well, and also, that's another interesting thing, where it said not recommended by the planning board. That was the thing that confused Sam. And I remember, we tried, the people who did not recommend it were the alternate members, and the three who were recommending it basically were the regular members, and we tried to get that pulled for a revote or something or other, and that was refused. The town attorney said that you shouldn't be able to have a planning board vote the issue again, even though the membership was different?
Well, within the structure of our planning board, whoever's here, whoever's here tonight, that, the voting members.
Sure, no, I understand that, but...
So I think it's inappropriate to say there were three permanent members and four were alternates. That's who showed up for the meeting and took the vote.
And that's understandable, but at that point, the wording wasn't even finalized, and for it to go forward as required, the lawyer said we had to go forward, even though the wording had not been finalized. And when we came to working the wording, the members who were there voting that day were opposed to the wording and were opposed to including it, and the attorney said we had to include it. So we used the old wording, and we were in opposition to having it go through with that wording, if I remember it.
Well, I would certainly understand putting it into the poll of, you know, the public survey. And that's why I asked you, what wording?
Yeah.
Have you thought about it enough to come up with wording that would be, other than... I hate the polls that come out, and they lead you. So if we could word it so it wasn't a leading question...
Absolutely. The way it is now on the previous survey is that indicate, it's an 11 HNI, and you have to say whether you agree or disagree, or have no opinion about the statement. So H is that Route 16 should continue to be zoned to allow commercial development for its entire length through Jackson. And I is, Route 16 should be zoned village only near the village, but made rural residential from a point north of the northern junction of Route 16 and 16A. So that's a different point than what was on the vote.
Right.
Yeah, because they're cutting that out.
Right, but this is from quite a bit before.
This is from 10 years ago, yeah. I realize that, but it's, if we're looking at the old survey and seeing how we're gonna change it, obviously, that's something that we'd want to look at to see if, how to change the wording to make it maybe less specific as to where the cutoff would be?
Well, then, then we could go into discussion of where that would be, and certainly, it'd be interesting to know the input of the town as far as the idea was concerned. So if we could make it a fairly generic, general question, not too many possibilities, maybe one, interested or not. Because I don't think the survey's gonna hammer out the specifics. I think that would be done.
Oh.
If that is the will of the survey, then we'll work on it, I think.
So would you take I out there?
If I was, I'd ask one question, you know?
I think one thing we can do is that kind of question, we need to say, we want the gist of this question, but ask Phil Davies for his input on how to word it in a way that would not be leading.
Well, actually, I think what B said maybe is one way of doing it, which is just that, do you agree or disagree that Route 16 should continue to be zoned the way it is?
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Which is?
Which might be confusing to people that don't know.
Which is, Route 16 should continue to be zoned to allow commercial development for its entire length, yes.
Okay, so as long as we're specifying it, spelling it out that way, I think that's fine.
Yeah. So then you take I out?
Yeah.
Yeah. Any new questions that haven't been dealt with that we're interested in asking the town about?
Well, I think some will be generated by our build-out studies. I think the mayor's going to come up with some questions for us to use in our survey.
And should we, may I?
And in all vote.
And the question, S, T, and U, talking about tourist, be a tourist-oriented town. Do we want to focus on tourism there, or the flip side, which is to increase the diversity of employment opportunities or economic emphasis? But isn't Jackson a tourism-oriented town to begin with?
Yeah.
So I don't think we need to have a question even in there.
I don't know what other industry is gonna come into Jackson. I mean, other than, you know, somebody works out of their home, you know?
Yeah.
But all we can do is, you know, entice them to buy homes. But I don't see, other than some businesses along Route 16, what are the... Where is the potential?
Well, we have a word that limits how many people you have at your home working. I mean, you only have, what, four employees, three?
Three.
Three employees in the house?
For a home industry.
Home industry, is that something you wanna target as a, you know, change, potential change, or... Whether it was you want to opt to more, or...
Tourism, is it?
Okay, what I put down...
So you've got all seasons, all set.
Should we change the words of the idea of home industry?
Let me just... Like you said, that's probably about the way that you're gonna get around here.
Yeah. Do you need to mention that? Well, the idea, I know there was, there was one instance where somebody wanted to have a, run his business out of the house, and was not allowed to do it because it was going to... Okay, customary home industry.
So Dominus' house, I think, was blacked out, obviously.
Yeah.
She didn't damage... Oh, that's, that's right, because...
And because he was gonna have...
They wouldn't, yeah, they, he wanted to put, and they wouldn't allow Gary Spears to do it.
Right.
Customary home occupation means an industry or occupation carried on exclusively by resident of the premises entirely within the building and employing not more than three people, providing such use is secondary to the use of premises for dwelling purposes, also providing that such use does not constitute a public hazard or nuisance, such as having your office over the garage and have conducted entirely on the Internet, and that type of thing.
Yeah, it doesn't warrant much. In fact, something like a cabinet shop or a woodworking shop would be, I think, acceptable, wouldn't, if you kept it between, you know, two or three people.
So that's what's allowed now, the question is, should it be expanded?
Right. I don't know, I don't think so. I think it should stay with the home industry, but I'm just wondering.
Right, the question, do we want to have that on the survey?
If we expanded it, then there would be parking problems perhaps, and things like that. Well, you'd have to... Right, and then once you start inviting the public in, then you have life safety codes to look at, and... All right, and then how about the idea of expanding the ability for inns and...
Yeah.
Inns and...
Bed and breakfast.
Well, bed and breakfast get to go, that's on the industry.
Customary home occupation.
But I'm talking about an actual inn where you're not...
Yeah, it's funny to think of places like Christmas Fireman or the Eagle Mountain House as being a non-conforming use. That's certainly something we could survey people about and see if they would like to change that so that's a conforming use, or if they prefer to keep it non-conforming, they really can't expand what they're doing in those places.
Christmas Fireman did a number of years ago, they expanded it, you know?
Right, and that's partly because our ordinance at that time was, seemed to encourage that, whereas, yeah. We're missing the word "not" in the description. Oh, it's all there.
Don't we have lighting ordinance?
Yes.
So we don't need it. So south flow lighting should be a little lighter to preserve the...
What number is that?
Uh, no.
Right. I think we...
So that one...
We did that.
Yeah, that one got passed.
So that was on the way to...
Yep.
Well, I've been on the last slide, lot of frontage.
That's right, what is it now, 200?
200.
200, 150.
You mean that frontage?
Robe frontage, just a...
It depends on district or...
A good example for the kind of thing that might be created is, let's say, people were given a survey question about changing the district that's north of the village from "village," quote unquote, to something else. If you were to suggest that it could be commercial with cluster allowed, there are some parts that have really steep slope or water hazard, places where people wouldn't want to build, but if you allow greater cluster that's for commercially usage, you might get places like, oh, what used to be, I guess, the Ellis River Store, or some places like that, where there could be some clustered commercial around there, different from what we're allowing normally in the Village District, and different from what would be allowed in rural residential. So you might set up something, you know, right now, the Village District, in most people's minds, Village is a sort of centralized location, such as our Luthers', whereas when you think of a commercial sort of strip, a lot of people wouldn't want to see Route 16 developed as a commercial strip with one place after another, but they might think that having a cluster of three or four little stores and then some open space around it might be more acceptable. So we might try to tailor a question that would allow that kind of zoning to be offered.
Well, one of the things you have to be concerned about also is the soil density and septic systems in there.
Sure.
And where the Village Store used to be is too close to the river.
Right, no, I don't mean that specific story, things could happen right there, but a place that is like that, that might want to build in someplace further up the road, maybe...
Well, one of the things you have to be concerned about also is the soil density and septic systems in there.
Sure.
And where the village store used to be is too close to the river.
Right, no, I don't mean that specific store, things could happen right there, but a place that is like that, that might want to build in someplace further up the road maybe, that right now would be some village commercial where you're expecting each place to have its own entrance and its own location, there might be some clustered opportunities for commercial that could be incurred.
And are you thinking of something like where Kringle's is that?
Yeah, you could maybe allow something like that, that wouldn't normally be something you'd expect in the village, but it might be well-suited to an area where, if there are some steep slopes and you get four or five businesses together that aren't going to go up on the steep slopes, they might be able to be more clustered and take advantage of that and then leave open space around them.
I'd hate to see the road get all junked up with stores and stuff like that, they would. I mean, it's so free.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's like we have them down there, do we need, do we need down there Dallas then?
But then, then we're, if we're going for that kind of thing, then we're advocating for a rural residential rather than village, you know.
It's the way it is now, you could do.
Right, you could definitely go all-
So you could have a whole strip of stores.
On the left-hand side in most of the rivers too close.
Sure, but not always, there are definite parts where the river, you know, is far enough back and not too low, and some of that is residentially occupied right now, but there's nothing saying it can't switch to commercial if that's what the residents don't want to sell and somebody wants to buy and use it for something different. So I think it's just good to get the ideas out there and figure out wording where people can give an opinion.
How's the tax base changed when it goes from residential to commercial?
Well, it's so interesting. They say that the lowest use, of course, of community services is vacant land. You're not going to get many fires on them or calls for heart attack or whatever. The highest expense for community services is on residential land and commercial is in between.
Residentially occupied land.
I don't think that I'd want to go into a commercial endeavor up along 16 there because we have down at this end and in Gorham and in between, it's pretty wild. I don't, I can't conceive of going that way to, to-
Well, one of the also things is, is that most people that have commercial, want to have a commercial building of some kind, okay, want to be closer to North Conway. I mean, where our stores, there's so many, there's so many, so much land available, but they're not buying the land because they still want to be down on that end because that's where people walk around, that's where they shop, that's where they want to be. And to have more commercial land for sale up that end, I, I don't know, I just, why?
So do you think people would support converting it to rural residential? I know they did, you know, however many years ago we did the last survey, but do you think they would again? Is that, do you have a sense of that?
I think they would, to tell you the truth.
Or the survey, find out.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think the discussion is absolutely critical to planning.
Yeah.
I mean, to preserve that, you know, there isn't too much areas for the moose and the bears to be if we start putting, I mean, we have to, what was Lyndon Johnson one time or Lady Bird, that, you know, no more commercial billboards and everything else to make it, you know, there's nothing wrong with having open land.
That's how you could see the list up, for Lady Bird.
Yeah. Anyway, this is my opinion.
Yeah?
I think the new buildings are doing-
Oh, that's awful.
Looks like a gas station.
So the White House wants to let up, I don't think.
I'd like to see the pavement increased in width from snowflake up to the entrance to the pond so that you can, you don't have a half a width of a car to park in, you have the whole width to park.
Remember before they striped it, the parking was fine, they screwed it up?
Well, it's a bearing now.
They did, by strapping it, they screwed it up?
You get parking on both sides and you have a conflict driving back and forth. It needs to be a little wider.
Then when they, well, we talked to the state-
They wouldn't widen it?
Well, the sidewalk is part of the problem.
That's right.
Took a long time to get the sidewalk.
And they used the sidewalk.
All we could do is, as they did when we were in Portugal, they'd just drive up and park half on the sidewalk. And with a minimal fine, we could probably generate some real money.
Right, that's a good idea.
Parking has been a discussion for quite a long time. I mean, we talked about, one of the ski clubs has land right to the Thornhill Road.
Yeah.
Talked about trying to get some parking, they didn't want to, all right, so, but we just don't have that many places where you can park.
They lost it when they lost the first, because they let everybody back. That's when they lost it, wanting to pack. We talked to the state about on Thornhill Road, it's so wide, like we could make that and-
They do it in the city, they put them in, they lift them up.
You could do that.
There was, I saw that this paper line, it was really good.
Yeah, but what happens with your, when you get your car?
It goes forward, it goes right down, it's all, it's all mechanical. Your car's seventy, seventy up.
Which says increase maintenance of town-owned buildings, I think, would be a good idea.
And I didn't know what you decided you were going to do about S and T on there. You're not going to put S and, S and T in there?
Don't you think tourism should be essential?
Yeah.
I don't.
I don't either.
I don't think it's necessary, do you?
I don't, but that's-
Does that have any regard?
I think tourism's essential, but I know there are some people who are so angry about it.
Well, it is the business.
I remember Robbie White being furious about it, and it seems to me that anybody who lives up here, who does work, there's an element of tourism that's involved. I mean, Robbie White doing house construction, some of what he's doing is obviously for absentee landlords or for landowners or for people who have been away and want to come up and revitalize their house in some way or whatever. I mean, we're all affected by it in one way or another. I can't see why people are opposed to it, but obviously there are people who are, I've heard a lot of people in town just hating tourists.
Well, yeah, because they want it to themselves.
They got the answer right there.
We need more tourists, they're going to feed the black flies. Quite for us.
Oh, my God, watch that.
Yeah, they are bad.
You've got to try to lead the mind. Well, do you want to leave it, Angela?
I don't know if we need it.
I really don't think we need it.
Okay.
Is that a consensus?
It is what it is.
I'd say S, T, and U don't need to be there.
Right.
Because I think there's plenty of, plenty of cooperation between the different organizations.
So we're proposing that we omit I, L, S, T, U, others?
And N and O.
N and O, okay, that's right.
N and O.
And Q?
Yeah, Q, it's not needed.
Does that spell anything?
Probably some language.
Yeah, you've got several vowels, there you go.
Come on, you scrabblers, you can come up with something.
Engrams.
We should probably be asking some questions about housing. You know, there are, we've got a lot of second homeowners, I don't know if we can figure questions for them, questions for people who are tenants. To what extent is that important? I know they recommend that one of the elements of our master plan would be about housing.
You're going to have to come up with it because I have a really, I have a bad attitude towards the idea.
Towards the idea of asking about housing?
No, no, you can ask about it, but I'm not going to do a good job of asking the question or forming the question.
Okay, and some of that will come out during our build-out analysis, to some extent, how many vacant units there are, maybe how many rental units, I bet that'll be part of it. How about questions about the grazing property? What people would like to see here if, you know, are they satisfied with the things that are here, the library and the highway and the town offices, or would they like to see additional things created? We have some trails here, is that how they want the rest of it to be or?
Well, I know the Conservation Commission has some ideas on the trail that would go up through there.
So maybe they want to propose a question or something about it.
Well, you already, you have a ski trail going up through it already.
And I think they're trying to even go so far as, well, ski, snowshoe, part of it handicap access, at least graded so that, you know, people can get around on it.
But questions, how would it be used in the non-snow season?
Right.
As to whether it needs to be promoted?
Do you think that even needs to be on there? Do you think that even needs to be a question?
Well, I could see the question worded some way, what do you think should be done with the remainder of the graze-in property, X number of acres, I think the proposal's something like 27 acres, with the back X number of acres, and then just make a list of possibilities and people can then rank them as desirable, undesirable, or no.
Because, you know, we've had maybe three or four different master plans developed for this area, and none of them has sort of been approved by even the selectmen, much less the town. And maybe it makes some sense to try to get a town consensus on what people would like to see here and have it as part of our master plan on how that consensus would be brought forward to do something.
Okay, what do you think some of the ideas for, I mean, we went a long ways paying off a million-dollar note to buy the land. And now that it's here and we got this building on it and we have a library on it, what other offerings do you think would be appropriate?
Recreational opportunities. A lot of moving the ice skating rink over here.
Remember the pool, B?
Yeah. Well, I found some concrete with the kind of aqua paint on it.
You used to get frogs out of it when I was a kid.
Right. Yeah, I think there's a lot of recreational potential.
Borough Phillips, I know, had drawn up a proposal for there to be, I think, eight or so of housing units that would be workforce housing units that the town could use to sort of meet the needs for workforce, state workforce housing requirements.
Would the town own the housing?
Well, it depends on how you could structure it. You could structure it so that the town could own the land, and that would really restrict what could happen there, and then the houses, of course, would be sold, I would guess, so they'd be on the tax roll.
Boy, that's a stretch.
Yeah.
I'm having a little trouble with that.
Being a business of being a landlord.
Yeah.
Well, it's-
Like, minimize the property and then put in cluster housing?
Yeah, I think that's what Borough's proposal was. He did that a number of years ago with the selectmen. He proposed something or other like that, and I don't think the selectmen ever brought it out in the open and discussed it.
But then the graze-in property wouldn't be for everybody. You know, you have your recreation, where everybody can go and enjoy the music, you have your library, your town offices here, and you have your, your garage here.
Well, you still have the recreation trails.
But it's still, you still have somebody owning or renting or whatever it is property here, they go up with their family, their friends, or whatever it is, and it's no longer for the community to use.
Right, and part of the worker housing idea is for ownership. Which I agree with, but I don't see where it works.
Not in Jackson.
No.
It's not, it's not easy to make it work in Jackson because the land is so expensive, which is why I think Dick Badger's another one who's in favor of making it happen back here because the land would not have to be part of the cost element.
Well, if you figure out a way to ask the question or, you know-
Who's going to build it?
Enter the dialogue, right.
It would have to be market rate.
But that's probably, it would be too late.
It wouldn't be anything involving the federal government, it would just be market rate.
But it would have to specifically say, people live in Jackson, I couldn't, you know, somebody coming up from Rhode Island sees this is affordable housing, I'm going to buy it, I'm going to, you know.
Second home.
It's a second home?
Right, or what if the worker comes?
You can restrict it, but it can't be a second home, you can definitely do that.
Okay.
Well, somebody retirement that comes up and decides to buy it because they can afford it.
You do ownership. Once they own it, then how do you restrict what they can sell?
You can't.
You put it in part of the whole document that they've signed, it's permanently restricted as, as part of the deed.
So they'd have to sell it to somebody-
Who qualifies.
Who qualifies financially for that.
So you can set up your fire.
I just think it's too valuable a piece of property to do that, to cluster.
It's hugely valuable for recreation, I think, hugely, in the center of town.
Yeah.
Here we are, you know, worried about parking, but we've got parking here, maybe we can expand the parking here and have more recreation. I don't think it's ridiculous to have, you know, swimming, certainly ice skating. I can see ice skating out either next to the library, I mean, there's any number of places we can have a skating rink, and it might be-
Dave Weathershead and I do, putting it back, back behind where the library is, and you have the water to come in from, from the stream, and that would be your source of water for, for freezing the, the ice skating rink.
Yeah.
So it might now work for a swimming pool, but it'd be great for skating.
Well, if you have a swimming pool, you start getting in all sorts of liability issues.
Yeah, then you get to go through that whole thing, but ice skating, I think, is a little more straightforward. Okay, there's a recreation, and then the trail system, snowshoes, cross-country skiing, walking, people actually just walking. But, I mean, it could be a great place to just, I mean, I've trooped around back there and it can be very peaceful, even with the town garage. I mean, it's, the garage doesn't impact it. You get down into the apple trees and, you know, it's very pretty. You get down into the apple trees and, you know, it's very pretty. Anyway, okay, do you wanna discuss the graze-in garage?
And what about that?
Well, there's an opportunity to, uh, sell, the town to sell a piece of property.
Oh.
And encourage.
I was thinking of that, you mean over there, sure, the real graze-in garage?
That, to me, is the graze-in garage.
Right, of course.
Yeah, it is a lot of storage, and it's got a nice new metal roof on it and everything, but it's still, um, talk about something that would go onto the tax rolls. I mean, it could, you could get the money for selling it and also put a business in there, possibly.
But then you'd have to spend money to get something to store the things that are stored in it now.
How much is really stored in it now, do you know of him?
I haven't been in it in a long time, I could tell ya, to be quite honest. I know that they, yesterday at the ambulance meeting, they wanted to store the, uh, the mobile, um, emergency trailer in some place in Mount Washington Valley, that was mentioned as a possible.
Do you have one from the Red Cross?
There's one on the Red Cross already there.
Yeah.
This is the one from, uh, Department of Safety.
So do we get any rent for storing their stuff there?
Uh, no mention of any money.
But if you needed it, say.
Well, it's maybe. It'd be north for the whole North Country.
Yeah.
We're talking the only one of twelve that would be for Jackson North, in case there was another hurricane area or something like that.
All right, well, I'd certainly wanna be prepared, but.
Lot of dust in it right now.
Just to keep the building going for that, I question.
Well, does the highway department?
Well, I thought the new garage was gonna take care of the highway department's needs of storage.
We need to do a little research here.
Yeah, and then, 'cause the fire department got the old highway garage, right?
Yep.
So they've. So they've got their stuff in the highway department, so, anyway, this is another thought. But you understand my point, I mean, you sell the property, you get that, but then you get something in there that pays taxes, so it's kind of a winning combination.
Yeah, we're in good shape.
Something to balance, I mean, that are extremely valuable. Expensive houses, they're gonna be filling the call for stuff pretty good, I think.
But that might be a cluster home possibility.
Right.
So you have a work permit, it's, it's, out there, I think, is a question, let's see how people feel.
Yeah, fine, I mean, first we put the question out, but. Well, it also could be a location for a multifamily dwelling for affordable housing. I think that, I don't know, um, what meeting, what Jerry mentioned, that, that town over in Maine, where they have, um, the islands off the islands, they have, the, um, the towns there own, um, the property, that they have the teachers to come in and things like that, it's affordable, but the town owns it, um, so that's something that you might wanna think about if you wanna think about affordable housing, the town might own it as opposed to, um, individual zoning it. But then the town would then get it into the retail.
Oh, yeah.
Into the real estate business. And just make sure that it's the people that are living here in Jackson, that are working here in Jackson, and not the tourists that are coming up, or second homeowners, or whatever it is, and they don't have any rights to this property.
Right. The ski bum's got, ah, this is great, we're in there.
I think you have to restrict it to people who are currently living or working in the valley, something like that.
Well, as long as you don't get, you know, my First Amendment, nobody's gonna stop me from doing whatever, 'cause that takes place as well, you know, you can't stop me from buying property here, or whatever it is.
Well, yeah, you can write it into the deed as to who's gonna be allowed, you know, you can set it up as to what.
Well, I know they do that for the Habitat for Humanity, but they, they have their own banks to support all those, um, their own banking system that they have through Habitat.
But if the town owns the land, it has some sort of, um, access to restricting the deed, then you can set it up the way you wanna have it set up.
I guess I just don't understand affordable housing. I mean, I really don't think it's necessary here. In the valley, there's tons of affordable housing, but in Jackson, I don't know, I mean, that.
There's a lot of patents in Jackson.
Yeah, and there's also, the, the, the land is extremely expensive. I mean, it's not like it was thirty years ago when it cost you twelve thousand dollars for three acres.
Right. And actually, there are statistics, I didn't happen to bring them with me, but there's a study, um, done of, uh, housing in the entire valley, and it really, it would be a huge shortage of housing that's suitable for lower-income families. I, I can bring that in next time, I'll drop on us.
I understand, I mean, but there's, there's down in Little Conway, there's in Conway, there's in Bartlett.
There's rental.
But talking value-wise.
But doesn't Miss, I mean, Jackson has to have a year.
Because, I mean, it's all across the country, it's, it's not just here.
Oh, I understand that, but who's occupying our fire department? Right now, um, you take people like Ann Peterson and Peter Benson, uh, who are our rescue people, um, as both Peter and Ann say, they're not gonna help us, um, come out of the second floor window. Um, we need younger people who are part of our community.
They don't volunteer.
Well, that, I'm sure may be true, but we don't have very many, you know, the average age in Jackson is forty-nine, we're the oldest town, I think, in the entire state, in terms of our aging population.
The whole state in New Hampshire is. It's just here.
The whole state is, but then if there's one town that's older than the rest of the state, apparently that's Jackson.
Like having your, you know, villages down, you know, you have your retirement community. Um, we, young people can't afford to come in and, and buy property. I mean, they really can't.
And so what does that mean for the school? What does that mean for the fire department? For, you know, um, we're lucky to have people like Jay living here, taking care of our highways, um, but even he lives over in what they call East Jackson.
I don't know, would they really be comfortable living in clustered housing? You know, I mean, it's like, I don't know, I just don't like clustered housing, I guess.
And, you know, should we help rental situations? Should we help get that apartment above a garage, and, you know, all that? To me, that's more viable. I mean, ownership is fine, but.
The accessory housing ordinance in our, uh, zoning ordinance, that's terrific. You know, you take the cluster housing that's up on the, uh, falls, uh, Jackson Falls that Mike Malat built, where there are, I don't remember if it's four or eight homes back there, maybe it's six, at any rate, um, so those are clustered housing units, and nobody would know the difference if there were, let's say, um, six of those created, one in each, um, there was a kind of duplexes. And if one of those same-sized ones was divided into four instead of just two, it's still clustered housing, nobody would know the difference driving by or looking at it. The people who were deoccupying it would be paying lower costs to purchase it, or to rent it, or whatever, because it's a smaller unit. But they're still, um, living in an area where they wanna be, if that housing is created and available.
I understand that, but a lot of, when young people buy a piece of property, or buy a house, or whatever it is, it's, it means a lot to them, and to, you know, to be renting it, or not being able to turn it over, make a, make a profit on it, and go to sell it.
You can still make a profit, it's just a restricted profit. You can't, uh, you know, it goes up according to how the CPI increases, Consumer Price Index. I mean, you set up your regulations so that it would increase in some way, and usually they do it according to the CPI. Well, it's, the difficulty, I think, is that it's such a complex thing, that it's hard to put a little questionnaire on the survey and have people understand it or react in a way where they would realize, you know, how things would be restricted, it's very, very complicated. So it probably wouldn't work unless there were meetings that were explaining and advocating for it, and then people might grab hold of it.
We had a meeting here, and there was about fifty-some people there, and they were very accepting, and it was going to be Section Eight housing.
Yeah, and we made it clear, even before people started talking that it wasn't Section Eight, and yet there were two women who really thought that it was all about Section Eight. But in general, I thought the town was so terrific about the questions they asked and the way they were responding to it.
I didn't get very favorable opinion after, you know, when they found out that it wasn't Section Eight, um, I didn't think that they were all keen about it, to tell you the truth. I really didn't. Especially when you were talking about Larry's property down there. And there, again, properties are really expensive in Jackson.
Right. Which is why it's not gonna work unless there's some sort of.
There's housing up there on Carton Mountain, I think, Barbarterio, those up there, there's four houses up there through there.
And those are terrific, those are.
Yeah, it's more, more land up there.
Yeah, the land, the people who've occupied those four housing units are really, you know, delighted to be there, it's terrific.
But they're renting.
They are renting.
Yeah.
And Ann Peterson's getting a good return on her investment there, she's pleased with it, too. But I think it's true that young families in general, if they can buy, they'd like to buy.
Oh, absolutely. I agree with that. 'Cause then you're not paying rent, you're paying the bank, but.
Right.
At least you're building equity for yourself, and it comes back to you in the end.
Right.
So, you know, I absolutely believe it.
I mean, there's a lot of, I think when you do your build-out analysis, the company's gonna be doing it, there's a lot of houses that are all up, all over the place in Jackson, and, um, they look like they're maybe not as expensive as some of the other houses, but they're quite a lot of money.
Yeah.
Because, there you go, again, because everybody knows that Jackson is a very exclusive area to live in.
Well, it's desirable, it's desirable.
Yes, it is.
I think that's the nice way to put it.
Yes, it's a better word. I don't know. But there, again, the, the, Ann Peterson's properties, they're all up there, they're not young people that are renting those places, either.
Oh, there are a lot of young people there. I mean, Barbarterio's not, but there are a lot of young couples that are occupying those.
There's Faber and Thompson.
Yep, and there's, um, Meg, I don't know if Meg and Dave Murphy have moved now, they were there for a long time. Alicia and Brian Walker are there with their young baby. So I don't know what, you know, percentage of people are younger and older.
Well, housing's gonna take a lot of work to figure out a, an appropriate way to ask the questions, because there is so much to it that.
Right.
It's not a simple solution by any means. Yeah, and, and I think we should, you know, that was good, but I think we should move on, or if there's other things, 'cause I got a couple.
I think all that could be incorporated in number nine, I think that would think, number nine needs to be rewritten.
I don't think under Jackson is likely to experience a dish in the world. You can't, you can't have fast food, so you can cross that one. Gas stations. We used to have five.
Really?
Yes, really. Martin Scough, Bonnie Huey.
Badger's old office.
Yeah, yeah, Bonnie Huey. You had the Wildcat, you had a Sunoco, and Fosse-Gall at once.
And the one up by Bob Lay's old house, too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're in the road.
Oh, that's right.
Any other areas that people have thought of that need to be addressed in a questionnaire?
I think one thing that could be nice, looking at some other master plan surveys, um, reasons why people choose to live in Jackson, you know, so you might list a variety of, um, things, uh, low taxes, privacy slash nature, good school, uh, rural community, I'm not sure what kinds of things we wanna include in that, but a general question about that could help us to understand some of the motivations people have. Recreation opportunities.
Now, that's a good question. Why do you wanna be here?
Another question that the town of Easton asked was about, um, what are the, um, natural resources that you feel should be preserved, and are there ways to preserve them? So, um, about scenic roads, about a particular, you know, what is it, Washington Rock, or, what was that? Profile, yeah, thinking about Washington Rock up Carton Nature. Poor wetlands, um, oh, hillside development, people have been, you know, complaining about.
Bridge development, yeah.
Bridge development, people have been complaining about that guy who clear-cut.
Couture.
Yeah, couture. But people also made clear years ago, when we brought that up, that they don't wanna see something that's just affecting the ridge line, if we're gonna set up some restrictions that should be town-wide, so maybe we should look at that and see how people feel at this point.
Townwide at certain steepness?
Well, I remember Dick Badger was saying that, yeah, if you've, um, if you've got a, I don't know, let's say, twelve percent grade, or fifteen percent grade, or something like that, it shouldn't matter if you're on top of Tyrol, or down in the village, it should have the same restrictions. I don't know, how do people in town feel about that?
Right, 'cause I remember the last wording, I think it was very, uh, kinda pinpointing as a zone, or an overlay.
Exactly.
And I don't know that that's gonna work if you don't have it just across the board. I, I think that it has to be a little more.
Yeah, we wanna go and measure each property to see if it's fourteen-hundred feet above sea level. Maybe not.
And, you know, the profile on the ridge lines, people over the ridge line, I mean, there's a lot of words on that last one, I remember it well. All right, I have a couple of things, where's my? I had it, oh, there it is. Yeah, master plan, of course, okay, build-out contract award. I did call North Country Council, the woman who did the proposal was not in the office. Whoever was there was gonna try to give her a message to see if she could be here tonight. I said, that'd be really quick, but, you know, we wanted to sit down, have a face-to-face, work out what we're going to latch on to, and what we're gonna say, no, we're, we're gonna pay for this, here's your proposal, this is what we expect to get, and get it on paper cleared up.
Did you see the contract?
Uh, this one? North Country Council, playing technical services.
Oh, sure. So that seems to basically cover what was in the proposal that we have. Of course, it has the two, um, extras that we didn't approve, the, on the back page. it has the two extras that we didn't approve, they're on the back page.
So we're not going to go with either of those?
Right, well, I mean, at least not yet, I think we might decide to later on, but.
If we could get it nailed down ahead of time, it would be cleaner than to, you know, go into it later. Because I'd like to give them, you know, a real good idea of what the expectations are.
Okay. They do say that the pricing is good until June 30th, 2014, on those last two. I don't know enough about what the difference is between number seven, presenting the results at a public meeting with all the visuals and so on, and number eight, conduct the community visioning session. So for me to be able to vote on whether or not to include that, we'd need a discussion with them.
Those are two different things.
Well, right, but that's what I would like to have them show up here for our meeting so that we could ask those questions, have, you know, have their words of, you know, how would you explain what you're going to do for us for this money? And then we can go ahead with it. I don't think we can solidify it until we do that, until we have to sit down face-to-face.
Well, let's say that if we don't sign this until the September meeting.
Yeah.
We approve it at the September meeting, then it takes the selectmen another week or two to sign it, we're really delaying the start of the whole thing. I don't know if that's what you want to do.
Well, I, I mean, I guess we could start, get the, you know, one through seven going, and then have them in in September to discuss the rest of it.
Yeah, that's part of theirs, is that they want to come in and talk with us about exactly what we're expecting. Let's see.
Is there number three on page five?
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, exactly. So I think if we say to the selectmen, we'd like to get this signed and get that first payment, is it 2,500 or something like that, out there, and that then we're expecting them to come to our planning board meeting in September. I think our original hope was that they'd be all done by November. If we didn't start it in September, I should think they'd be hard pressed to get it done by November, and we want, I think, to be able to send out this survey toward the end of this year, give that.
With the tax bill.
With the tax bills, or at least by early December.
Okay. Well, I will keep talking to them up there, try to get hold of her, and see if we can't nail that, and then did the selectmen approve our recommendation, so we can go ahead and give them the down payment.
So the selectmen can then sign this contract? I think I emailed a copy to Julie, but maybe I'll do that again.
Okay, do we need to run this startup? Should we take a vote? Want to take a vote? Anybody want to vote?
Actually, I was wanting to, just to make sure that we know how this is all going to fit in, and to make sure that what they're going to do is going to be, you know, the results are going to be something that is useful for us for the master plan, and how is this going to fit in? I mean, we haven't done something like this before in our master plan, now how is this all going to fit into what we have to put together for the master plan?
Well, from what I've heard, the build-out is going to give us the information to ask the questions. That's what the kind of, the build-out is driving.
Well, the build-out is going to be essentially, picture the town that's not in the national forest, and to say, well, if every single bit of land that could be developed gets developed, this is how many houses you're going to have. But then, how is that going to help us with the master plan?
Well, basically, as I envision it, it'll show how, given our current zoning regulations, how the town could be developed. And then often, as I understand, that they make recommendations based on that, if you change X and Y.
But that's not in development.
I think we.
I think we have to develop that.
But then, if we want to say change X and Y, then we'd want to see what the, what the effect would be, because they're just talking about taking our, taking our existing ordinances and the existing physical conditions of the land, et cetera, and tell you what's the maximum that could come out.
Yeah, well, that number four on page five, basically, it talks about the current regulations, the application of the zoning ordinance subdivision regulations, which we don't. It doesn't say something about changing things for the future, but I was thinking that they also discussed that in their proposal. No, that's in the visioning. Oh, that's right, it's number nine, so that, that would be, I think, the final thing, if we decided that we wanted to have the consistency between what the town's goals are and the future when there might be some other controls, or our current controls versus the community goals. But that's an extra one.
Well, that's why I wanted to get them in here.
Yeah, but I think we need the process to start, and ideally get them here for the September meeting if we can.
Well, I would think that if we got the process started and gave them their first payment, that they would be somewhat obligated to come in for our next meeting.
Yeah, and I don't know, you know, there are only two of them that are involved in it, I don't know if they committed down the road on second Thursday, if they may be, so we might need to set up a special meeting if that's the case. It also talks about that they will begin work within 30 days of our digital parcel data, so we need to try to get that.
And they are saying that that data needs to be compatible with their ARC GIS, and so if it's not compatible, then that means that we will have to pay to get it compatible.
Julie told me that it was compatible, so if she understands.
That's our system.
Yeah.
It's ARC GIS?
Yeah, so I think that that's true.
That's all that's.
I've dealt with problems like that, I just, and it's time-consuming to make changes.
Yeah, that's what she told me at one point.
Well, it just, yeah, it went computer-based, but I think, you know, the GIS technology is used a lot.
So how can we make sure that that part goes along with the payment and the contract?
Which part?
The ARC GIS information.
Well, they say that.
Right, so.
It says work will begin within receipt of it. Do we need to say how they're, you know, do we need to inform them about how they're going to receive it?
Right, should they come down here and sit at our computer and say, you know, we can get this up to?
Put it on flash drive or whatever, and put it up there.
Yeah.
However it can work. So you're going to contact Kara and James and see if we can?
I am.
Excellent, okay.
Say, we'd like to do this, but we have some questions. Okay, let's see, under, so that was the old business, any old business? Under new business, there was some discussion about voting at the Whitney Center, some of the wording of our voting regulations have to be reorganized.
We don't really have voting regulations.
I know, but they're so specific for the Old Town Hall that they're not easily applicable to the Whitney Center.
But that's an issue for the selectmen?
Yes, that's not.
Okay. I had a question about any zoning regulations that anybody knows about for a view. They were complaining about a utility pole that was put up for a lot that was subdivided off of another property, and I think it was a third party had, you know, a new utility pole in their view. What do we have to protect that? I didn't think so, and that's what my answer was. But I know that up on Tyrell, there are some deed restrictions on view, trees, whatever, but that's for them to fight out with their lawyers and, you know.
Right, and if you have an association, it's all, if you're buying land within an association, you're buying into the association all their regulations.
Yep.
And so if you go against them, it's up to the association to deal with that.
Okay, that's all I have. Sometimes it gets taken care of by a higher authority. We have a, in Wentworth Condo Group, we had a family that was complaining about a big tree was blocking their view, and when the storm came, it blew the tree down, no problem. Nice way to do it.
Lightning strike also, that's another possibility.
Anybody have any further?
I did want to ask you, Jen, are you going to go with us, oh, the survey, the survey board, and conduct a review of the survey? I mean, nothing was really decided on that.
Well, we aren't going to be sending the survey out until.
Right.
So you have some time?
I think this was like a work session for that, and then, now that we've got everybody thinking about it, come up with the questions, if you have other, you know, read through it, and, you know, we can craft up our own document.
Okay.
All those in favor? All right, any opposed? That's the end of the meeting.